Agenda Meeting to order Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Ficus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Treasurer Parthone.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Buchanan.
Present.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
Present.
Councilman Frankie.
Here.
Councilwoman Huffman.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Currently not present.
Roll call six zero.
Okay.
If we could get some control of Raven back there. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Does it feel like we've been, it's been forever since we've been here?
We got the extra week.
Yeah, it was three weeks.
I guess that's what it is. Petitions and comments of citizens. Rick Ogle, if you could come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Rick Ogle, 1902 Indiana Ave, Laporte. As everyone's pretty much aware, I have a problem with signage. I do. About three months ago, I came in front of this body and asked about if there was something that can be done. And I was told, we'll look into it. That was the last I've heard about any of it. Last Monday, I went down in the basement to Code Enforcement Office and mentioned that there are six signs, instead of the four that have been there for about three months, there are now six signs on Indiana Ave in the tree lawns advertising for businesses. I'm wondering, first, am I going to be able to put signage up in my yard on the tree lawn and I can advertise my old business? I went down Monday morning, left a message for the code enforcement officers who weren't there, they were out enforcing the codes. And I got a call Tuesday of last week saying they would take care of it. Well, when I drove into town this evening, they're still there. There are six, there are four on Indiana Ave, and they are all, their businesses, basically the same business on Indiana Ave. And there are two on Michigan Ave, one is a post. I would think that posts are pretty hard to put in. And I'm wondering, why don't, why isn't it, why aren't we able to find these people? If you find them, they're not going to do it anymore. I would think that the enforcement officers can do that. I would think that that is part of the whole deal. And these signs are all within three quarters of a mile of this building. Everyone drives by them. They all know it's against the ordinance to have them there. And I'm wondering why they're not taken down. Just sort of wondering with that. And then, I was trying to go to my old business a week and a half ago. I couldn't get to the business from the street because the snow is on the sidewalks. It used to be, snow was removed. I understand, I probably have to go to the bid board to complain about this. But the bid board is appointed by the city council. So I come to you first.
Thank you. The signs will be removed tomorrow. You got my word as mayor, those will be removed. I do have one question, just from the snow perspective, and I know we had an overwhelming amount. Could you say that again? It was pushed?
The snow, the, the snow on the sidewalks is not, not pushed into the street, on the side streets. I understand the state highway will not do that. They, they will not remove the snow. But the city, when I was, when I was on the bid board and I had it worked out with the city street department, if we got that snow into the street in the morning, they would get rid of it. They'd put it out in the middle, just like it always is on the side streets. And then they would take care of it. And people could get to businesses. I'm sure Bert has a, he, his, his place, he couldn't get to there. He would have to shovel it himself. And all these property owners, they have to pay extra for that service.
Thank you.
It doesn't happen.
Okay, thanks.
Should I, should I go to the bid board next?
Let me see. I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. But the signs will be removed tomorrow.
Okay.
They were aware. Any other comments publicly?
No.
Thanks, Rick. I don't have a card, but go ahead and come forward, state your name and address for a brief comment.
Thank you very much. My name is Dean White, 3066 North US Highway 35. Good evening, council. I met with Joe Haney today, Laporte County Commissioner, and he said that I could tell you that the county will be more than happy to partner with the city to clear and create the Vista View at Pine Lake and Waverly to, it's, it's the entrance to the Soldiers' Memorial Park. And they will also help with equipment, such as land clearing equipment with, with an arms reach. And a couple of your council members have previously visited the site with me in the past. And I would love for you to reinstate that into your agenda.
I know, we had, we had met with you before, oops, sorry. And there was, there was issues with it being city, state, park, you know, so I know that there were some issues there. So it was like, whose responsibility that actually was?
The only part that is the state is what is mowed by the state next to the curb. The city has a portion, a smaller portion, and the county has a little bit larger portion of that Vista View, view clearing space. And they're willing to partner with the city to clear that and, and make a beautiful view where you can actually see Stone Lake, you know, from Pine Lake Avenue. And when the sun's shining, the glistening waters, it's, it's called a Vista View.
Thank you. Now, what I would recommend with your support is to contact Mark Schreiber at the Park Department tomorrow.
Well, I, I know what, his first question will be is, how many employees are they willing to send? Because I, I know, when we talked to him last year about it, it's manpower that he was concerned about. So if we can maybe all get an email with Commissioner Haney and figure out what exactly that looks like, and then go from there.
Yes, I would love to see that progress.
Can you initiate that? Do you have all of ours?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I think, I, I understand what you're saying. To make a very nice view coming into town, the, the county owns the, the majority of that. And I think we would be hard pressed to say, we're going to improve that, I, put our manpower out there. I do, I do wonder if it makes more sense that the county transfers that to the city. I mean, that.
That could take some time. It's, it's about one-third and two-thirds.
Yeah, if you can, if you can email all of us together, and then we can go from there.
And please touch base tomorrow with Mark Schreiber.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Nothing online.
So today was a special day from an opportunity to thank one of our own, one of our city police officers, Chief Paul Breton, who has served this community for 30 years. And all the work that he's done, I've been, it's been an honor to serve and work with Paul for his leadership. And I've certainly appreciated that. With that, we have named a new chief and assistant chief today. Our new chief has come with great success of his own, has been a City of Laporte person, started here, worked five years here at this department, and has gone on to great things with the county and turned things around. His name is Chief Dick Buell. We have also appointed Matt Dragmeister, who I see as an opportunity for the future, as assistant chief. And if I could, take a quick minute to have Chief Buell come introduce himself, talk a little bit about his agenda, and welcome, chief, we appreciate that. This is like your third time, you should be a pro at this.
I had my first detail, and I let these lovely ladies from South Central, got them into the building. So, good evening, my name is Dick Buell, and I'll be your new chief here in Laporte. We have a lot of things ahead of us, a lot of things that we're going to do within the department, but most of all, we want a safe community. And that's what we're going to strive for. We're going to do the war on drugs, and that leads to a lot of other crimes. So we're going to work on that. Have a lot of, a lot of plans. And we're going to take our time on some of it and find out what we can do best without jumping ahead of ourselves. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity. It's, I always like a challenge, and, and this will be a challenge. You know, society has changed over the years, and, but we can, we can work through it. So again, Mayor, I appreciate your confidence, vote of confidence, and looking forward to working with you.
Questions for Chief Buell?
Oh, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Former Chief Breton, something that's important for the mayor, since both of you are here. And I know, I believe, former Chief Breton is going to be speaking to the item, or will that be you?
Chief Breton.
So if you don't mind, the two of you could come forward for a photo of passing of the guard. I appreciate that, if we don't mind.
Where would you like us at?
Just right up here, up front. And if our team could get around this, this is one of those horns.
Hi.
Yeah.
Busy day for, busy day.
This is part of the photo.
Wait, are we in it? Is it just us? What are you doing here?
Bert, did you get it?
Uh, yeah.
He does, he has something, all right. Thank you.
Former Chief Breton, please come forward.
I'd like to introduce myself. I was Police Chief here for one time.
We got some awards. I always told everybody that one of the most neglected parts of our department was always the K-9 program. We have some special people, one couldn't make it tonight, that have helped out in that area. I'm going to call Ryan Allen up to introduce the first award we want to give out.
Candy.
The award is all yours.
My name is K-9 Officer Allen. This is my partner, K-9 Candy. We just want to recognize today Sean Snyder. He is the general manager at Pets by Plus. They are invaluable to our K-9 unit. They give us free food, free treats, free baths. We've gone.
Your dog's not you.
Yes.
Yes.
But, any questions we ever have, he answers. He always has a smile on his face.
Sure.
Ready to talk to us, see how our dog's doing. We couldn't do the K-9 unit without them. They just offer so much. And, you know, we just want to show our appreciation to him and his team. Just they're a great, great for Laporte.
We got Sean a few things here. Sean, outstanding service, thank you.
So I was walking my little dog in Pat's cemetery. This lady had a great name, was trying to get to our little dog. I think she could not. Hmm, that dog was so big. So we got the head out of there.
It's our dog.
Yes, please.
That says it all, right?
Candy's going to speak for you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Then everyone knows Ashley and Raven. And Ashley had a trainer for Raven that unfortunately couldn't make here tonight, but Ashley's going to say some things about her.
Yeah, so unfortunately, Raven's trainer Josie couldn't be here. Hey, Ray, Ray, here, sit, tree, look, tree. Okay, good girl. So one year ago, Laporte Police Department launched our therapy K-9 program, and we adopted Raven from the county animal shelter. Since then, you've all seen her at our city events, leading our parades, and having time with all of our local kids. What you haven't seen is all of the behind the scenes work that has gone into training a shelter puppy to go to work and love a bunch of cops every day. It's not an easy task. That's where Josie Johnson of Haas Craggern K-9 Services comes in. From day one, Josie has donated hours and hours of her time, week after week, working with Raven. From obedience to socialization to disassociation training, Raven has, Josie has poured so much hard work into training Raven, and she has done it with patience, grace, and she asks for nothing in return. I'm very honored to work with Josie. And unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight, she had an emergency. But we have a citizens' award and a plaque for her. So at Raven's next training session, Josie will get her citizens' award.
And she gets this plaque with Raven's picture. Ashley designed all this, so what a great job by Ashley.
Ashley, thank you for all you do.
Thanks, Ashley.
And then a very large part of this is our vet. You want to come on forward? And New Prairie, well, it's actually Oak Knoll. Sorry, I almost screwed up. Our vet is also from this great town called Rolling Prairie, it lives down the road from me.
Metropolis.
Yes. But once again, she takes care of all five of our canines. And once again, does it for nothing, which is just tremendous. I'll let you speak, and then I'll hand this to you.
The, so canine dogs mean a lot to me. My husband's a K-9 officer for St. Joe County. So Oak Knoll Veterinary Clinic, we provide all of the veterinary care. So preventative care, preventatives we get, dentals, surgeries. We spayed Raven not that long ago. So it just means a lot to us. And of course, we, being members of this community, want to make sure we give back. So in this aspect, this is a way that we can give back to the community. So, thank you.
That was designed by Ashley also?
On behalf of the City of Laporte, thank you very much for that service.
Absolutely, thank you.
Next time I'm there.
Yep.
Okay, that concludes mine.
Thank you, thank you, Paul. Standing Committee reports. Council President Frankie.
The Redevelopment Commission met last Wednesday, the 31st, here in council chambers. It was a pretty exciting meeting to see as, it appears, there's a decent chance of Newport being built out finally to completion. You know, the mysterious Bert Cook wouldn't reveal what exactly, but nonetheless, there is a lot of great progress. And it, it looks like we're right near the finish line, so I'm excited to see that. Other than that, minutes were approved, election of officers for the new year happened, and it remains the same. Brian Chalick is the president, Damon Gasway is the vice chair, and J.T. McDermott's the secretary. And they approved some bids, or not bids, I'm sorry, approved some bills. There was a opening bid for the Don George property on the agenda, however, that was tabled. And I believe we will see why shortly. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Huffman.
The Sustainability Commission met on Monday, January 29th, 2024, in council chambers. Due to the number of projects coming up, it was moved that the meetings be changed from monthly to biweekly. The next meeting will be Monday, February 12th, 2024, at 4:00 PM in council chambers.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Traffic Commission will be meeting tomorrow, 5:00 PM, at the police station. And then Park Board will have their next meeting Wednesday, February 21st, 4:00 PM, at the park office.
Councilman Galloway.
Police Merritt Commission will meet on the 13th, 2:00 at the police station. And I believe next month, we'll start with the Veterans Committee meetings.
Councilman Galloway. Buchanan.
The Historic Preservation Commission met January 17th. Newly elected officers were selected, and they discuss goals for this upcoming year.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
The Airport Authority will meet next Wednesday, February 14th, at 5:15 at the airport.
Thank you. Two-year-old checks. Clerk Treasurer Parthone.
Okay, checks issued by the city are good for a two-year period. At the end of each year, state statute requires the clerk treasurer to present a list of outstanding checks. Our office attempts to contact vendors to see if invoices are still outstanding, and if so, we reissue the checks. I'm asking council for approval to redeposit these checks back into the original fund they were written from.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, regarding the, the ones with the blank payable to, I understand that's HIPAA, which makes me assume they are employees. Is that accurate?
They're, they're claims for, insurance claims that came through, so.
So it's to the insurance companies?
We'll work with UMR to get, to see if we need to get them paid.
Okay.
Yep.
Further discussion?
Nope, and we have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Investment report to council.
Okay, on an.
Treasurer Parthone.
On an annual basis, the state requires the clerk treasurer to present the council an annual investment report. For 2023, the City of Laporte earned $158,455.53 for seven different funds that are invested in the state's Hoosier Fund with Lake City Bank. As a reference, in 2022, the city earned $46,293.91 for the same seven funds, an increase in 2023 of $112,161.62. The Hoosier Fund is a money market fund allowed by state statute, specially for units of government per Indiana Code 36-1-7-1. Funds are pooled together to earn more interest as advised by Baker Tilly. We earn interest daily and can access the funds if needed within 24 hours with no penalties. We have been investing in the Hoosier Fund for the past 10 years. And then, interest earned on the city's checking accounts for 2023 was $508,970.89 between 19 checking accounts at local banks. This is an increase of $362,915.76 from 2022. There is no action needed from council. This is for information all purposes only.
Thank you. Questions?
Great job.
Council President Frankie.
Your Honor, I move to read the resolution in its entirety for the first and only time.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman President Frankie.
Resolution concerning the transfer of real estate to the City of Laporte Redevelopment Commission. Whereas Indiana Code Section 36-1-11-8 authorizes the transfer or exchange of real estate between governmental entities upon terms and conditions as may be agreed upon by the entities, and as evidenced by the adoption of a substantially identical resolution by each entity. And whereas the City of Laporte owns certain real estate located at 150 Pine Lake Avenue, Laporte, Indiana, parcel number 46063517700300043, as described on Exhibit A, which are desirable to the city for growth and development. And whereas the City of Laporte Redevelopment Commission is established pursuant to Indiana Code Sections 36-7-14 for purposes of economic development and redevelopment of the city. And whereas the city and commission are both governmental entities authorized to own, acquire, transfer, and lease real estate. And whereas, in order to further the economic development and redevelopment purposes of the city and commission, the city desires to transfer the real estate to the commission, and the commission desires to accept the real estate from the city in order to permit the.
The next meeting will be Monday, February 12th, 2024, at 4:00 PM in council chambers.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Traffic Commission will be meeting tomorrow, 5:00 PM, at the police station, and then Park Board will have their next meeting Wednesday, February 21st, 4:00 PM, at the park office.
Councilman Galloway.
Police Merrick Commission will meet on the 13th, 2:00 at the police station, and I believe next month, we'll start with the Veterans Committee meetings.
Councilman Galloway, Buchanan.
The Historic Preservation Commission met January 17th, newly elected officers who were selected, and they discuss goals for this upcoming year.
Councilwoman Kenezini.
The Airport Authority will meet next Wednesday, February 14th, at 5:15 at the airport.
Thank you. Two-year-old checks, Clerk Treasurer Parthun.
Okay, checks issued by the city are good for a two-year period. At the end of each year, state statute requires the clerk treasurer to present a list of outstanding checks. Our office attempts to contact vendors to see if invoices are still outstanding, and if so, we reissue the checks. I'm asking council for approval to redeposit these checks back into the original fund they were written from.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, regarding the, the ones with the blank payable to, I understand that's HIPAA, which makes me assume they are employees, is that accurate?
They're, they're claims for, insurance claims that came through, so...
So, it's to the insurance companies?
We'll work with UMR to get, to see if we need to get them paid.
Okay.
Yep.
Further discussion?
Nope, and we have a motion and a second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Investment report to council.
Okay, on an...
Treasurer Parthun.
Thank you. On an annual basis, the state requires the clerk treasurer to present the council an annual investment report. For 2023, the City of LaPorte earned $158,455.53 for seven different funds that are invested in the state's Hoosier Fund with Lake City Bank. As a reference, in 2022, the city earned $46,293.91 for the same seven funds, an increase in 2023 of $112,161.62. The Hoosier Fund is a money market fund allowed by state statute, specially for units of government per Indiana Code 36-1-7-1. Funds are pooled together to earn more interest, as advised by Baker Tilly. We earn interest daily and can access the funds if needed within 24 hours with no penalties. We have been investing in the Hoosier Fund for the past 10 years. And then, interest earned on the city's checking accounts for 2023 was $508,970.89 between 19 checking accounts at local banks. This is an increase of $362,915.76 from 2022. There is no action needed from council, this is for informational purposes only.
Thank you. Questions?
Great job.
Council President Frankie.
Your honor, I move to read the resolution in its entirety for the first and only time.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, Councilman President Frankie.
Resolution concerning the transfer of real estate to the City of LaPorte Redevelopment Commission. Whereas Indiana Code Section 36-1-11-8 authorizes the transfer or exchange of real estate between governmental entities upon terms and conditions as may be agreed upon by the entities, and as evidenced by the adoption of a substantially identical resolution by each entity. And whereas the City of LaPorte owns certain real estate located at 150 Pine Lake Avenue, LaPorte, Indiana, parcel number 460635177003000043, as described on Exhibit A, which are desirable to the city for growth and development. And whereas the City of LaPorte Redevelopment Commission is established pursuant to Indiana Code Sections 36-7-14 for purposes of economic development and redevelopment of the city. And whereas the city and commission are both governmental entities authorized to own, acquire, transfer, and lease real estate, and whereas, in order to further the economic development and redevelopment purposes of the city and commission, the city desires to transfer the real estate to the commission, and the commission desires to accept the real estate from the city in order to permit the commission to utilize or transfer the real estate consistent with its authority under Indiana law. Now therefore be resolved by the common council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, as follows. Number one, the city agrees to convey the real estate described on Exhibit A to the commission without cost, which real estate may be owned, maintained, or transferred by the commission under such terms and conditions, and pursuant to such procedures as are authorized in Indiana Code Section 36-7-14 and other applicable laws governing the commission. Number two, the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized to execute a deed and other conveyance documents or materials as may be necessary and appropriate for the transfer of the real estate to the commission, and may approve any and all documents necessary or appropriate to eficcate the transfer of the real estate to the commission. Number three, this resolution is effective immediately upon its passage. End of resolution.
Bert Cook, economic development, if you could provide us with some information regarding what this does.
Good evening at the council, Bert Cook, Executive Director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. You will remember, this is 150 Pine Lake Ave, we lovingly think of it as the Don George property. You will remember, we have kind of a long history here, we've put it out for bid through the council twice with less than ideal responses. So, the action today in this resolution would transfer it over to the Redevelopment Commission, which is, I think, more able and more flexible to, to try and find an arrangement or a proposal that would result in the property being developed in a way that we'd all like to see it developed. The Redevelopment Commission paid for the demolition of the building, if you remember previously, which was a big step forward in this process. So, we ask you to approve this resolution tonight, transfer the property to the Redevelopment Commission, they'll complete a bid process, and hopefully select a developer which will be able to find a, a deal to, to put the property back into use. Board of Public Works will be presented the same resolution tomorrow, and if you vote affirmatively tonight and tomorrow, then the Redevelopment Commission would ultimately approve a resolution accepting the property and completing that RFP process that I mentioned earlier. Happy to answer questions if you have them.
Questions for Mr. Cook. But remember, this has been a long process, well before the bids, when we had to demolish that eyesore there, and you've turned this now into something that's going to be very positive for the community.
The building next to the McDonald's, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I move to adopt the resolution concerning the transfer of real estate.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Other business, let it be noted that the former police chief was in attendance, the new police chief was in attendance, and the only one still standing is our fire chief, Andy Snyder. That's why everybody loves Andy Snyder. Any comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, as a proud South Central graduate, I would like to recognize some fellow satellites here in the crowd.
Please do.
Welcome.
Including my, including my niece. Elizabeth, would you like to stand up and introduce your friends that are here today?
I'm Elizabeth Tate, this is Kendall Rosenbaum, Riley Price, Hope Walts, and Kendi Warren. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ladies, we're glad to have you here. Council members will be available after the meeting for you to sign, and sign your paperwork for government class. Do I have a...
I'd like to also recognize the Big Comedy LaPorte charity, inappropriate trivia, which is definitely inappropriate, went off on Saturday, and full disclosure, I am on the board of that, but we were able to raise a little over $16,000 in one night, and we've never kept a dime, that money all goes back to local charities. In this case, it will be put into Hastings Park in honor of Amanda Sorg, a late board member, but it was a great night, and we appreciate all the community's support as well.
Thank you. Further comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned, have a great evening, everybody.